Like to call this meeting to order on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Tuesday night, six o'clock. And Henry's doing Zoom with us tonight as a school committee member, so. Uh, first thing is a review of the group of minutes from twenty-third of January.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Uh, financial report, please.
I don't have really anything to report on because we just met two weeks ago, so I didn't even re-download reports for you, but. Um, I will let you know the warrant totals for the record. There were four warrants since the last meeting signed electronically totaling twenty-one thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Henry, do you have any questions about the financial statement at all?
Nope, all good.
Uh, please.
I'm going to have public comment now.
Bring forward first and then public comment.
It's it's the episode.
Okay, well, short and sweet because we just met two weeks ago, so we haven't really had a whole lot of time to do anything. That's amazing. And the global leaders did have a pet day. Um, students brought in pictures of their pets who would take them on themselves and pin them on themselves or pets they wish they had or. Grandparents pet, um, and they brought in donations for local shelters. So that's really been the noteworthy thing in the last two weeks.
Well, thank you. Now we have public comment.
Okay.
First time we've had public for a while, so.
Well, I'm excited.
Welcome.
Am I close enough for the thing here? Okay. Um, so my name is Rachel Sanadella. I'm a Wheatley resident and a parent of a child who attends West and a former administrative assistant. I'm here today to voice my concerns about the school safety at Wheatley Elementary School. In two thousand twenty-three, there were three hundred and forty-six school shootings and fourteen incidents already in two thousand twenty-four. Of the ten deadliest U.S. school shootings in two thousand eighteen, although one happened in small rural suburban towns. These are quick statistics regarding only one type of violence in schools. There are many other types of low-impact threats that schools must deal with and are equally as important to consider. With school threats occurring daily, school safety must be at the forefront. The following are my points of concern at West. One, all exterior doors are automatically unlocked by motion sensors located in the vestibules, an extremely uncommon and unsafe feature. When someone is at the interior doors or in the vestibule, the outside doors trigger to unlock. There's also an illuminated push-to-exit button that's accessible to any child or adult. And when pressed, the exterior doors remain unlocked without any notification to staff. Newer technology for the past decade provides a safer and more controlled environment. Two, both classroom wing hallway doors are not equipped with magnetic releases. In the event of an emergency, main office personnel should be able to push a button to close both classrooms' zones, securing each wing that has direct access to children. Three, there are a lack of lockdown style and security door stoppers in all rooms. All interior doors have a piece of paper taped to them indicating which way the lock needs to face in order for the doors to be locked. Investing in an affordable lockdown-style door stopper commonly used in other schools will keep the room inaccessible regardless of lock position. And it will add a layer of security to occupants. To date, the one thing that has saved a hundred percent of lives in an active shooter situation is a locked door. In addition, all police training will share that increasing barriers that provide time is also important. None of these items that I mentioned will stop a school threat. However, they remove many variables that in the event of an emergency could save lives and provide the time needed for police to respond. The school committee manual states that the school committee is responsible for keeping abreast of new laws and the latest trends in education and for the adoption of a budget. It may hope that you will take the information I stated today and look into the trends regarding school safety and discover what neighboring districts have implemented to provide a safer environment. I recently worked in a school where all of these upgrades were completed at a low and reasonable cost. Therefore, I urge the school administration to prioritize the safety of children and staff by making the necessary upgrades that will replace the current and antiquated system. As a parent of a child in the school system and a taxpayer, I'd also like to see the school safety upgrades included in the capital improvement plan. There's no way reasoning for attending the school committee's meeting tonight if my family and I have made several attempts to raise concerns with administration, but they have not been receptive to our feedback. Thank you for listening and for taking my concerns under serious consideration.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, it's nothing that we really bring up during discussions because it's not on the on their on our agenda or anything like that, but we, you know. I'm serious about about locked doors, especially, you know, that frontier where we have six hundred and something kids there. It's been a priority of mine, thinking that you can, you know, the kids leave the door propped open. You know, with new security measures, I I see it a lot less when I've been to sporting events. They were, a kid will put a block of wood in the door or something. I mean, it's hard to prevent something like that, but, you know, we'll we'll check into it and, you know, I will get back to you or administration will get back to you. But thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Great time during the minutes. Okay, could you share that?
Absolutely. Yeah, I will send stuff email to the school committee. You already just email everybody.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next thing, unfinished business. We're gonna vote on. Um, we'll vote on new policies first. We'll vote on removing policy second, and then we'll talk about the budget afterwards. So, okay, we want to do with one one group to vote on?
Yep, I mean, these are the policies I read through last last meeting. You guys can vote them as one group if you wish.
I'll make a motion that we accept E E A, E C, E E A G, G B I, G C A, G C K, G D B, H B, J F, J F B B, and J F B B dash one.
I will second.
All in favor?
You need to say.
Aye.
Well, I was trying to save it from saying all that.
I'll do the next one.
Okay, go ahead. I'll make a motion to remove these policies.
I'll second.
You want to?
You're gonna say?
Yes, you're right.
Uh, second, the motion to remove C L F B B G A, G C C D, G D Q D, G C Q E, G D Q C, H J B A, J H B B A, J C, H C, and J K A.
All in favor? And come to you again.
Me again. All right, I'm gonna share my screen. I will email out these documents to you so that you have them electronically as well. Oh, can you hear? You can hear me. I'm not be.
Do we have?
I was muted.
Dated budget?
I did not send them to you yet. I'm going to send them to you.
And shout out to W E S for having the only functioning Google meeting I've been on in two weeks. So, well done, you all. This is very exciting.
Thanks for acknowledging that, Henry. I spent a lot of time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is draft two of the budget, I guess, or presentation two. The numbers really haven't changed since we last met. I'm gonna go through. I'm gonna go through what we talked about last time, where the budget stands today, and our our next steps moving forward. All right. So last we presented, uh, at the meeting two weeks ago, we talked about a level service budget, which came in at four point six five percent over the prior year. A good chunk of that was related to the grant adjustment. So we paid the current year that we're in fifty-one thousand roughly in wages with S R funds. S R funds are have to be used by September. Um, Wheatley does have some additional funds available with S R, which we did talk about last meeting, and I'm gonna get back to in a moment, but when I build the level service budget, I always throw things back on that were are being paid for in the prior year with a grant or one-time funds that's going to go away so that we can really see what the true cost of the budget is if we no longer have those funds available. So that grant adjustment of fifty-one thousand, uh, we had non-wage increases of seventeen thousand. Ten thousand of that is for special education consultant services. So related service providers that we're bringing in to meet students' needs based on I E Ps is primarily what's that that is for. And then some other minor adjustments to lines that have been overspent in the last few years. Buildings repairs, grounds maintenance, um, our copier costs have been higher than what we've budgeted in the past, so we made some minor adjustments there. And then the wage increases, you can see those are outlined for you. There the unit A increase, uh, that's anyone that falls on the teacher contract. Uh, so not just our teachers, but, um, you know, special education teachers, grade-level teachers, uh, specialists such as speech or O T, if we have any of those positions, nursing staff, um, anyone that falls under that unit A contract. What I want to note here is that we're seeing some savings on this, just as a reminder from the last budget presentation, because we did have a retirement come in. Um, we had a, is it your school psychologist?
No.
Oh, special education teacher, sorry, I couldn't remember, um, retiring. So we did capture some savings here. So this is a lower number than usual. Uh, Unit C is our I A contract or any, um, health service support staff, which Wheatley doesn't have any L P Ms. Um, you do have a part-time Coda, right? So that isn't, do you have a part-time code? You don't.
I want one.
You want one.
No, I have one.
Um. Just keeping it. So this only accounts for staff that are paid for general fund as well. So that's all we're referring to here. School-based staff, the increase is not very significant here because we have a change in the position. So Mary's position was a year-round twelve-month position. The current structure of that role is that it is ten months only, so we captured some savings in this budget. So that's bringing this number down. And then the central office cost share, uh, Wheatley's cost share went down slightly over the prior year. And we're seeing, uh, savings captured here due to the change in the nurse leader position. So my point in telling you all of that is that next year, when some of these things catch up to us and we don't have savings from the nurse leader position and we don't have savings from retirements, you could see these numbers coming in a little bit higher than what they're currently presented. But level service at almost five percent is a pretty significant number for a small school. Um, so next, we're gonna talk about new requests. Uh, so here is the part-time Coda that that, uh, Chrissy was hoping to add to the budget, and that is based on need in the district. Uh, primarily for students who require occupational therapy as part of their I E P.
Sorry, this is occupational, an occupational therapist coming into the school?
Assistant. This would be a staffer, so.
Okay.
So ideally, we have still the occupational therapist to one full day a week.
Yep.
And then, uh, half-day full day, full day of, uh, certified occupational therapist assistant.
Okay, cool.
Does someone have to oversee that person?
Okay, so they each just do one day?
Yeah. Um, the math interventionist position, we did talk about last time as well. I will defer to Chrissy to talk about that further. Uh, this is a need that has come up two years in a row. I think last year we talked about it as more of a general interventionist to fill in where needed. Um, but more specifically this year, you're saying that you're seeing it, that you the need in areas of math. So this would be a point-five position. Do you want to talk about that a little bit further? Um. Really, I'm just, I don't know if she gets this. Obviously, you've probably heard this already.
Um, yeah, the, I mean, we haven't had this person in Wheatley since Carol McCosby's here, correct?
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure what the title of her role.
I, I don't know.
I don't mean to be funny.
Oh, no, no. She had many roles, but she was good in math.
Um, I know. Students went to her for math.
Yeah, so we have, um, one leading interventionist, um, who is, she was at one time seeing K through six. Um, and when COVID hit, we needed to isolate her to K to two, sometimes K to three. Um, but we're releasing a need for math intervention in four thousand and six.
Yeah, I wanna, I mean, I wanna bring up our scores.
That's that's why, that's what points to.
Seems to be a good, um, solution for that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no, it's not arbitrary. I mean, it.
Right.
I always thought it would be nice to have a math interventionist and an E L A interventionist, but, um, now it's not just a nice idea. It seems that we've hit a point where we really kind of need it.
This person, um, part-time, full-time?
Part-time.
Point five is part-time. Okay, that's a.
Full-time is part-time. So the first challenge would be to get in the budget, and the second would be to find someone who can try and do that part-time, but one step at a time.
Is there, is there another, uh, school that is also looking for a part-time interventionist that we could pitch this as a full-time interventionist, but have a go half and half between the schools? Not in our district. Not in our district, okay.
Um, so the next request was for an additional I A, uh, full-time, one F T E I A position, and that is based on an I E P. Um, that is a need that we are going to have to fulfill next year. Um, so that that we're gonna continue to talk about as part of the budget process. Um, it's not, I I just want to be differentiate and be clear that it's not, we just want another I A in the building. This is for a specific student that we know is going to require a one-to-one. Um, and the last two pieces that we talked about adding funds were for field trips, equity and access. So more and more families, district-wide, are needing support in order to send their child on trips. And the cost of transportation has skyrocketed for everything that we're doing, particularly for field trips. So we're adding in some funds there. And then curriculum consumable money to account for additional costs related to the E L A and the math curriculum that we're, um, currently working on, rolling out. So all of these pieces would add almost another seventy thousand dollars to the budget. So we started at four point six five. If all of these items were approved and added, we would be looking at over eight percent, um, increase when it's next year.
Um, in the document you're going to send us, does it show the breakout of what each costs?
Um, you're gonna get a line by line, so you you can see it in there. Yeah. Um, the first presentation, I think I emailed, did have the breakdown. I'll make sure you get that, though.
And Chrissy, do you have like a order of importance for these? Like, if you were to rank them, what what are your top two, top three, like?
Well, the the Coda and the and the one-to-one, um, I have to cover the services.
Yeah.
Whether I do it by losing something we already have to fund that, it's not optional. Um, so in terms of priority, I guess those would be, would be the top priority, um.
In in general, costs as well, the math interventions is basically about thirty.
Yeah.
The I A is basically about twenty to twenty-five, and the Coda is probably fifteen. So when you're talking about these, they're not equal. If the vast majority of that sixty-eight, the field trips, I'm looking at just a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And the consumables, again, are not a, it's not an optional thing.
Yeah, the Coda and the one-to-one.
Yeah. So, uh, next slide, we're gonna look at administrative recommendations, which we did talk about last month as well when we met. Um, so obviously, we are recommending to fund level services. We are also recommending to fund the request for the one-to-one I A as well as the field trip costs and the curriculum consumables, as Chrissy just said. Those are, um, things that we have to do. We have to, we have to have consumables to go along with the new curriculum. We have to be able to provide transportation for our field trips and family support where needed, and the F T E I, the one F T E I A is going to be in the I E P. Um, the Coda, the math interventionists are not on here strictly, uh, I think for primarily financial reasons. Um, it's not that Darius and I disagree on the need, um, but we we don't feel we have the funds, not only this year to support it, but what that long-term impact is moving forward. And there's, we're gonna come up to further conversation around that in the presentation, so, um, we're not taking it off the table. We're just letting you know right now where we would stand if we had to present a budget to the town today. Um, so I had mentioned earlier that we do have some S R money available, so we are recommending that we use twenty-five thousand of the remaining S R to help supplement the budget and, uh, an additional twenty thousand of Wheatley's rural aid to help supplement the budget.
What is the total left in S R and what is the total for rural aid?
Um, rural aid is around forty thousand. Uh, S R might have after this year, like thirty-five-ish left or forty left. Um, before that twenty-five is still active, yeah.
And that has to be used by?
Has to be used by September, and a good chunk of it is already all earmarked. This is what I feel is available. Um, we do have, uh, various things happening between now and September that Laura Ramsey and I have gone through and and earmarked the funds for. Um, okay. I have too many tabs open. I'm going back and forth. All right, so, uh, if we were to move forward with using these administrative recommendations, the next slide shows you where the budget would land if we did move forward with those, uh, recommendations. So level service reminder there. Approving twenty-eight thousand nine hundred of new requests, which really is a very minimal amount for field trips and consumables. The majority of that will cover the I A position. Offsetting with S R, offsetting with rural aid, our budget would come in at a three point eight-two percent increase or just shy of seventy-five thousand. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the budget quickly. We're gonna go, I'm I'm just gonna go through these. You guys are gonna get these slides. Actually, a paper copy, but I don't know if you want to take notes on any of those. Um, we talked generally about budget composition in the last presentation. This is more specific now that we've owned in on a number that we're possibly moving forward with. You can see here that three-quarters of the budget goes to student instruction, so that's anything related to teachers, I As, um, administrative costs in the building, not your central office expenses. Those are categorized under district administration. Um, but a good, you know, three-quarters of that budget does go directly to student teaching and learning. Salaries and wages make up about eighty-two percent of the pie, um, about one point six million, and nearly all of that goes, uh, to instructional staff. Again, teachers, I As, um, and administrative staff that is directed in the building. And then other expenditures, this is an interesting one because it's a little bit more split out. Um, a good chunk of our expenses that are not salary-related are dedicated to operations and maintenance, so utilities, building repairs, um, custodial supplies, technology, things like that. And then that's almost even with the, uh, consumables and supplies and materials for curriculum instruction, small chunks.
Where's all the money in the middle?
I like your fancy wagon wheel.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow.
I don't know if I see a donut like that.
So in addition to, uh, the general fund, we use additional funding sources to help offset the budget. If we did not have these funding sources, our general fund would be about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars higher than it is. So this is just a list showing you, um, each of those categories. The thing that I want to point out here is that in the prior couple of slides, I did say that we were gonna use twenty-five thousand of S R to offset the budget. The additional ten here is to cover the, um, employee separation costs, buyback that we have to pay out next year. Um, so that's why that number is higher here. And then you can see school choice, early childhood, rural aid, I D E A, which is a special education grant, and then our school lunch fund. So the total budget, uh, total cost to operate Wheatley Elementary School is just shy of two point five million with those grants and revolving funds. And that reflects the three point eight-two percent budget increase that we talked about previously. So moving forward, I said we would circle back to that math position. Um, I didn't put the Coda on here. We can absolutely talk about that more. Um, as well, uh, we, what we talked about at the last meeting was, you know, can we supplement that instead of hiring a position that would potentially have additional costs to the town? You know, can we do consultant coming in to fill that need for those I E Ps, which still has a budgetary cost to us, but we do have a line item that we are already increasing for special ed consultant services. So that one could be more absorbed, I think, into either the existing line items, or we find other grants or or another way to pay for it. Um, perhaps there could be a little bit more funding with the I V E A grant to cover that. We would have to talk to Karen about, but I wanted to bring up the math interventionist position because we do know, we're hearing that it is a need. Um, we just have to balance that with being fiscally responsible as well, but we didn't want to have the conversation shut down just from a financial perspective. So what we're looking at at this point is further conversation around the math interventionists, how we would fund that, um, for fiscal year twenty-five. We do have another twenty thousand of rural aid that we haven't earmarked yet. That wouldn't fully cover the cost of that position. We're estimating probably thirty to thirty-five thousand to cover a half-time, um, person in that role. Uh, we may be able to squeeze a little bit more out of S R if I go back to the drawing board with Laura and
See what you spend.
Crunch down and and see what can we, um, do away with, but that's one-year funding. You know, how do we fund it in the future is one of the larger challenges. If our budget is already starting off this year without an additional staff person at almost five percent level services, how do we maintain that moving forward? Um, it, you know, having one-year funding doesn't really help us long term.
So in, it is going to cause us to be in a worse place next year. And so I don't know, and I don't, we're we're kind of blind as we don't know where the s- the town stands in the sense of right now, um, you know, Frontier will have its meeting on Tuesday, but Wheatley is gonna get hit by Frontier on its assessment. So, um, again, let you guys know that because it's gonna affect the overall ask from the schools. And that has nothing to do other than, has nothing to do with Frontier's budget, which is gonna come in at a reasonable number. It's just the state determines the wealth of the town, compares it to the wealth of the other towns, and says you owe this much of the money beyond what the the state funds. And so last year, and so I don't know where the town sits on this, and so some of this might be, we have a conversation with the town about this. Um, because last year Wheatley was not a held harmless school. It was actually a school that received funding. So the Student Opportunity Act funding is going to schools that are growing in growing in numbers, and Wheatley grew in numbers last year, and they got just under fifty thousand dollars extra. I'll call it extra because we didn't ask for um, to offset their cost of the school. So they, how do they say that? Do they have savings? Is that something that they will push forward this year, or do they use it and?
That was gonna say the town, you're saying?
Yeah.
The town gets, if the town gets the money directly, um, and they, you know, they can choose how they pay it. They used to receive more. While all the other elementaries, because they're all, it's called held harmless, but we, they're gonna stagnate or decline in enrollment. Um, you only get the parts to the cubicle, so you give it sixty dollars for a head.
Right.
A couple thousand bucks, but they actually got a lot more because that's how the S O A money is working. Um, so they're one of the few communities that did. It's really, it's really weird because it's like mostly the small, small towns aren't getting.
But they won't this year.
They won't get it this year.
They're back in hold harmless.
I'm only saying that because I, what I'm trying to explain is I don't know, are the revenues of Wheatley up this year? Is that gonna be shared with the deficit is, um, that kind of thing. And then the other, the state, you know, so and then also my concern on this budget is that it's gonna escalate next year. So, you know, we are in a a coal agreement this year that's, you know, to, you have to anticipate it's gonna be higher next year, is is what I was, was wanting to say. Um, and so those general costs are gonna all expand. So that's the concern about adding that position in. We work if you're around an idea of possibly doing a hang bird outside of the level. And doing a one-year position. So you find an expert. Maybe someone's retired, wants to do part-time, you know, or someone who is in between things, you know, trying to find the position, but has a level of expertise. And we do it as, you know, we use something like S R money in the intent of what it's for is to create a, you know, emergency services due to the pandemic and the lot, and then get us through next year. Improve student learning, you know, that kind of thing, and maybe get some of those students up and that kind of stuff. And then we assess at the end of next year, can we add it to the budget? Or, you know, are we predicting for it? The only problem with that is it sounds great when I just said it, but there's only so many ways to pull the money from that number. Other number, the three point eight is gonna go up, you know, if you use the money we use to offset. So if we, it could be a conversation piece we have with the town that says, listen, this is what we want to do. It's not added to increasing the budget forever moving forward to apply it this way instead of using using extra money that way. What do you think? And see, you see if people bite on that. Um, that would, you know, because there is a, you know, the math need is there. Um, we are also, timing wise, also introducing a math, new math curriculum. So that's going to help. And the thoughts are that, you know, after a year, that new math curriculum should be taken off as well. You know, meaning that we should be able to see the benefits of a more stable curriculum there. So you know, timing wise, having that person in in position would could be helpful too in that in that regard. So but it's X's and O's.
Yeah.
The O's didn't really work outright. The first time I read the numbers by Shelley. So it's gonna need, we're gonna need outdoor, outdoor, outside help from the town in some capacity to make that work. You know what I mean? They could pick up the separation cost that we were gonna use the rest of whatever from. I mean, it doesn't matter how you cut it. They gotta write a check or something in order for us to make it happen.
We're not, we're not a separation class for this next.
We do. Yes, about ten thousand. Your other.
Um, yeah.
So, but again, it's just, it's pots of money, but it's a one time cost and you know, they they'll buy into a one time cost to save the overall escalation of a budget, which many times the towns do and other towns are doing that.
They did one last year for retirement.
So we usually take retirement out because it's an escalator, you know, you know, anytime we can do one. You know, and then we have one time use this money. Essar's gone after this year.
And I, I would really encourage us to post it as a one year position with renewal dependent on funding, not to put it out there as just hiring a math interventionist because we may not be able to afford it. And if we're upfront with somebody versus having to lay them off unexpectedly.
Well, we already, it's probably me to be right with the cabinet back. So
Sure.
Say I heard that, might not be funded next year. You might as well be honest upfront so you can be honest with your. Um, but anyway, that's the only, I mean, that was the kind of a creative solution. But it puts us, it puts us in a tight spot budget wise.
And the other thing is we know that the one person who's retiring into this year, but a separation possible going to the next year. And by then I may have other retirements, so we could get whacked a couple times.
Right. And so then I know this is information overload, but this is the budget season. It's the time to take it in. The state revenues came out again today. They're under, they're now been, it's five or six months where they have not made, met the mark. And so they're saying, they're talking about again, possibly nine C cuts before the end of this year, which is gonna tighten everybody's purse. Um, the nine C cuts probably won't hit education, but um, which also means we also were at a budget meeting on Friday, um from a nonpartisan budget that presents the significance to explain the greater state finances. Um, and they basically said, in most years, the governor puts out a budget and leaves room for growth within the um House and Senate, where they add on their things. They said you, you should be prepared to see the opposite happen this year, that the House and Senate budget may come all under the governor's budget. So while instead of being um you know, being conservative, that it might be the actual higher numbers. You may not see. You may see, you may see like, you know, uh, the student, her pupil go up, but you may not see the funding of transportation, or you may not see the funding of some of these other things and the towns. So when we look at constricting, not just our budget, the town's also gonna be saying, well, we might get less for roads and we may get less for those kind of things. So everybody's gonna suddenly get more and more uptight. The big number coming out is April. It's when they release the April um first quarter results, but given the fact that where we're at now, that's probably gonna come under, under the estimated.
I wonder if we could bump back the timing though of our vote to adopt in the public hearing because Brian said that the town meetings right now slated for June four. Remember a few years back, we, I think right after COVID, we pushed back the timing because all the towns were having meetings in June. I mean, maybe we need some additional time, one, to map out internally the best plan, but also to see what the town's revenues.
Is that to wait for the state to come back to us on the first month on April or?
I don't know what, I don't think they have a deadline, the next level for the House.
They seem to have, but and again, I may be talking a little bit way too much up here in that sense by looking at what the revenues of the state are in April. It's just going to, those revenues are going to dictate how the House and Senate decide to, how much money they're gonna put into education.
But also, but also we gotta get this, as soon as we vote for the twenty sixth, then we get it to the town. I mean, if we go any later, then, you know.
No, I think we have conversation, I hear what you're saying. You're exactly right. I think we have conversations with them. This is gonna be one of those years where, you know, we ask to get on their agenda. Sometimes they ask us, maybe we ask them and we say, this is where we're at. And what are your, what does your funding look like this year? And that kind of thing. Um. And it, and it may, and it may, we have to fix the math problem in the house too. I mean, it, it's not, it's one way of solving it. There's other ways of solving it as well. I mean, you can put another hat on Chrissy. Yes, Chris will be at math as well.
I think realistically, if we're looking at funding a, a part time math position, we're probably gonna be closer to four percent than the three point eight two. Three point eight two is close to four, but I think we really will be.
Because you're gonna be funding it with Essar.
We're not gonna have enough extra cash to fully fund.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that, so a percentage point is nineteen, right?
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
So a percentage point is twenty and, you know, a, the interventionist you're saying with Essar Fund, we can probably take a percent of it. You're still gonna have some leftover that's gonna carry us overboard.
Yeah.
That we have to pay. I may have said that in more confusing way. Yeah, but you understand.
In, in April, um, the, when the state puts out those numbers, does that include the rural aid bill?
So the rural aid bill, they, that actually goes out tomorrow or Thursday, they will decide whether or not that that gets is gonna get put into committee, which means it's dead for this year. So we will know by the end of this week if the rural aid is, if they're gonna get another push to fully fund. Which they said, they said, there's no money to do that. So.
No, but the governor's budget did fund it matching this year.
But, we threw another but on there. The governor tried to change some of the language around it. So we're gonna see that it may try to re-categorize who's getting what. So again, it does the exact opposite, which all the schools have been advocating for, which is give us consistency so we can use it in our budget. So we don't know how much money. If we'll, actually, if we'll get the same, actually get the same amount as last year. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, and it's not a lot of money in the state budget. Fifteen million is not a lot. That's a they may not touch that. That's kind of a uh what do you call it? It's a special offer. And when you go to you know, you tag something for special.
Earmark?
Earmark. It doesn't get the special earmark. I mean, fifteen million is a, is a drop in the bucket compared to some of the major programs that they would, if they shift by one percent. You know, they shift tran, regional transportation by ten percent. It's, it's gonna be more than fifteen million shifted.
Even if it's funded levelly, the same as this year at forty thousand ish, we're going to need that to offset next year's budget that level services is probably over five percent next year.
I definitely don't think we should spend that.
No.
No, I was just curious if those numbers had come out yet. I, the other question I had um about this idea of doing a consultant instead of a staff member. For those there that have been in the game a bit longer than I have, is there any data to suggest that that's as effective, more effective or less effective than an actual staff member?
In each, in it's, it's uniquely specific situation that it's really hard to compare.
Okay.
How it works with a school staff member versus a consultant. Um, and these are small school issues is that in larger schools, they have, they may have a full time ABA on staff. They may have a VCPA on staff. We don't have that, so we consult out. Uh we have good partnerships in all of these realms. So I, you know, it's usually been a positive experience and um haven't experienced anyone yet who's not willing to work with the team. Um, which can be difficult because the time we contract them for might not be the same time that meetings happen and and people are usually pretty thankful about you know, joining the meeting to make sure that that we're all.
Right. It's gonna come down to a good hire in the sense of it's, it's fifty percent. So fifty percent of what? It's just mornings? Or is it three day, you know, two and a half days a week? You know, is it three days one week, two days another week? You know, like, there's all these different ways to do it based on you know, that, that would be open to the administration to try to figure out based on candidates and, you know, that kind of stuff to how to set it up. Um, because it, because it is gonna be hard. It's going to be someone in a unique life setting in the sense of either retired and wants to come back with a little bit, or someone who's working on a degree and wants to pick up some hours as they're going into curriculum and whatnot, or someone who's got a home life that, you know, they want part time work instead of full time work. Or we can find another district where they can find share. I mean, that's
When you have the one day a week people, it's tricky when someone has something in their service to learn a degree that's two times two times thirty or two times sixty. And then we ran into that a few weeks ago the first time. So our current occupational therapist who was, used to be here every Tuesday had to split her days. So she's half day Tuesday, half day Wednesday. And then we lose a little bit because there's travel time. So it's not, we don't get as much on it as someone who's here.
Could you say that's the only way that the person can see a, a kid twice in a week or either some.
Sometimes you're great, sometimes you're
Can't do it the same.
Within your IEP.
Legally, it could happen in the same day because then you're still covering those two times thirty minutes, but it's not ideal.
Is this the final, is this the final picture?
Um, no, I, I just have some info. I have an enrollments. Oh, go ahead.
I just want, you know, if we're gonna go to the town at three point eight two, you know, I, I, you know, I, I think we should, I think we should spend the rest of rural aid and lesser funds and get it, get it down below three percent. I think we should use the funds up. We gotta use one by September anyway. Why not, why not use?
That's a whole different angle of the conversation we're having.
I know. But, but I'm, I'm just saying that we go into the town at three point eight two and then.
Talking about going in higher. Talking about jacking it up the fort, getting the math intervention. I mean, that's, that's what we're discussing right now. I'm not saying that's where we're.
And I know, I know you guys, I, I, I realize that we need it, but we also have to think about there again, if the town doesn't have the, you know, the funds.
But that I don't see where it hurts to go in at that number and then they tell us we can't do it and then we come back to the drawing board. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we.
You know, we don't know what they have until we go out.
Right. And I, and let's, let's put the math interventions within perspective. The school will do a, will do the good job of getting those kids who are, you have some divisions to math without the math interventions. And if it's one way to adding, two ways to work on the gym, one's adding steroids, you know what I mean? And so it's, you know, and that's kind of not a very, you know, probably a terrible analogy, but right, terrible analogy, but you get the idea like, this is gonna be a shot of adrenaline to help within that area. We can still make gains in the area without it. We're not gonna be like, oh, these kids are forever. They're not gonna catch up with math. I don't wanna get that. It's not like dire, oh, we, oh, we bail the kids.
But we lose on something else. If that person's doing something else without having a new person, that's putting that person's time spread out too much where could be doing other things, correct?
Right, which is why we should try to get the math interventionist we're in this year, at least for a year, while they're working on the new, you know, math curriculum and get those kids up to speed so that they can be with their peers the following year. Um, so I, I agree that we should probably treat it as a one year position at this point and then see where we're at after that.
So I can redo the numbers, throwing as much rural aid and as much Essar as possible at it and then add back in the point five FTE math interventionist. Just a guess is we're gonna be at four or slightly above four and we go to the town and we talk about that.
And so understand just to, you know, know how that works. If you have, if you go into a public hearing, you can't raise that number afterwards unless you have another public hearing. So you wanna put in your higher number that says, listen, we'll, we can be talked about reducing this, but we have to show our needs. So if Shelley throws this together and we come back and it's, I'll go up even higher, it's five point one. That's the number we go into a public hearing. It won't be that high, but, but
Yeah.
For argument's sake, it's five point one. We go into a public hearing with the governor with attention. And then we can also have data says, well, this is what it looks like if you take it out. And just because we aren't funding it, doesn't mean the town can't fund it or fund something else within the budget in a different way. That's why I brought up the separation cost because that could be ten thousand dollars more. You know, which they've taken in the past because it's not an annual thing. You know, it's gonna be annual. You see another one coming, but you understand how it works. Um, you know, they would pay for something else out of their free cash to offset that year. And they, I know if they're thinking, they're thinking financially, they don't want to inflate the budget to be forever paying an inflated budget moving forward. They wanna keep that budget as low as possible and pay for things outside of it if they can. That was the.
I do, I wanna second what um, what Beth just said too about having it be for a year and see where we are. Um, my concern at a school this size, that a student is struggling in math, at least you see it in the high schools, that when students struggle, behavioral issues increase, that ends up taking away from the learning time of other students. So I'd be concerned if we would start seeing sort of an echo chamber of disruption. Um, so I think it's really critical that we get this on uh in the budget as a proposal. And I like this idea of going in slightly higher and seeing what the town says, what are their numbers for the highway department increase in budget and fire department, police department, and see where we fit in in the bigger picture here and see what they can give us because I have no idea what those numbers are, if they're asking for increases or anything like that, but I'd rather go in asking for more and then renegotiate than go and asking for less and being like, oh, God, I wish I had to put that in there.
Okay. Hey, that's.
Perfect. I have direction.
I think we need to meet with the town, uh, I mean, sooner than later. We, and once we're ready to meet with them because.
Did we last year have our public hearing at one of their meetings? I think we did.
We went there.
Oh, we went there to talk. I didn't think we voted on our budget.
No, but I think it was the public hearing presentation. I think we ended up you opened a school committee meeting at their finance.
Yeah, their committee meeting.
So we haven't really heard from Brian about presenting to them.
Want me to stop and chit chat with him a little bit? Sure, I mean. I can stop by tomorrow.
They do.
I don't know.
I think they have a meeting tomorrow.
Finance?
Should we just drop in?
They usually have tech go at the same time. Oh, to present as well.
Tech was there.
Yeah. Maybe we need to, maybe we need to connect with Brian.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I will connect with Brian, tell them, tell him our game plan. And um you will obviously want to stop and reaffirm that. Um, and see what he wants to do in the sense of if they want us just to do the public hearing and then we could have the public hearing there. Um, we should come here.
Be nice if we get this, was the finance in the select board there last year at the same time?
I think so.
I know the finance was.
That big. It was like big U of.
Yeah, but there's a lot of finance, but I'm in the old select board. I think what's his name was there.
It was not Joyce. It was both. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you go there, it is what it is and you can talk about, we just explain what we have here tonight. We'll summarize and bring this down.
Oh, I have many more things to share with them after the feedback that they provided. Oh, what?
They're gonna need line at it.
Oh, I've got it. Don't worry. Um, so I think I only have two more things here to show you and it's just data and we don't really have a whole lot to talk about. It's just um the enrollment slide. Uh, you can see enrollment had that big change from twenty two to twenty three, which don't forget, chapter seventy is always a year behind. So last year is when the state, or in twenty four is when state received the money for that big increase. And then we're seeing it pretty level from twenty four to twenty five and twenty three to twenty four. Doesn't make enough of a difference to increase aid there, but um just some info for you. Oh, and then historical budget data, just so you could see where we've been over the last eleven years. That's it. Thank you. I will email you this presentation and the line by line budget as it stands right now. Um, just so that you have that going through the process.
Finance committee and the select board, something to look at before we show up.
I think it depends when we decide the meeting is. They typically want it, I think, seven days ahead of time. So we'll have to figure out when that meeting is.
Whenever you guys, I mean, whenever you have something ready.
I mean, that March. I mean, we have, they're not gonna turn around to the next. I mean, we have, they're not going to turn around to next week and then the week after that's vacation. I mean, realistically. I, I, I think we're probably going to run with that public hearing. Anyways, there's plenty of time. I mean.
I just want to get it to.
They will also, right, they'll also have, right, no, and they'll also have Frontier's numbers as of. After Tuesday, next week, they'll have Frontier numbers. Because Frontier will pass that along because they have to have theirs done by the end of the first week of March. So. Um, but we have plenty of time. So, um. Yeah, I think, I think that we won't be actually be earlier, probably will be. On what we've already said as the, uh, public hearing day.
Okay.
Wait, when do we say?
Well, public hearing for here, but we don't have a public, they haven't said to come visit them at, at any time yet, have they? Come visit us? I can ask Frontier to, because one of you guys want us.
No, it's March seventh. Well, and they have to go to Frontier's public hearing on the budget. Because Frontier will be voting the budget at the time. It's little.
Paper copy of the line by line.
Frontier, all the hearings that fit. And we're supposed to have a public hearing of August the seventh.
They're going to vote it at six and then at seven.
I have a stack because I have so many meetings I didn't stack. And so any, so the first. What I basically said is that the voting of the budget would be less than an hour. It would be a forty-five minute meeting. There's no real discussion. You know, and if it's that much discussion, then we're probably having another meeting. You know what I mean?
Frontier's.
If something blows out, something blows, it's not going to blow up. The Frontier budget is pretty stable. So.
That's why we have a subcommittee there that does all the hard stuff for us.
Right. And there's not, there's not, we don't see, we don't predict it to be an inflamed budget, let's go that way in a sense of, we. You have meetings to calm people down.
Henry, do you have any other questions at all?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things just on my list that aren't budget related. Uh, is this the time to bring them up or no?
Is it about money?
Um, I'd like more of it. That's something you can help me with, but otherwise, no, it is not.
Those little hundreds?
Yeah, that works for me. Um, no, this is related to other, other school committee stuff.
Is that a good time, Kenny, or should we wait till?
Close this section of the, talking about the budget. I would just wait to get to reports.
Yeah, we get down to report though. You can. All right. Uh, new business. We got some new policies, first reading. I'll just, I'll read them off, uh, policy C D.
You know what? I can give you the, I think it, it just kind of works smoothly if I give you the, we take the two seconds for me to run through it this time. And that way you don't, when you vote it next time, hopefully vote it next time, whatever. Um. K C D is public gifts to school. There's updated language around the fiscal responsibility of the school committee on that. K H A, um, public solicitation in schools. There's cleaner language, um, in our. Policy was not updated the last time M A S went through. So it didn't even match the, what they were updating. So it's good to get that one up, um, up to speed. L B C is relation with non-public schools. There's new language in there. Um, it's a policy that we, we are working with, but. You may, really doesn't have this issue because there's none in town, but the other towns have to constantly work with the non-public schools. And the services that we provide as a public school, believe it or not. Um, you know, we provide services to private schools. Because with a public school town, but there's language, legal language around that within that. E H A A, um, is a new policy that provides a foundation for administrative procedures and practices. Um, to ensure that information which is stored and accessed, the district's technology is appropriately protected. So it's district security related to technology. E H B is data and records retention. This new policy, another new policy. Addresses the gap in the recommended policy regarding retention of records, including electronic communication by public officials. Another new policy is G B E E, personal use of technology. This new policy outlines the responsibility of the district personnel and their use of technology is expected. This will provide a foundation for prudent administrative procedure. We already have our acceptable use policy and that kind of thing. So this stuff is not new, but it's kind of like. It basically says you will have procedures that's, that will follow that. And we already have the procedures. We just didn't have the umbrella policy above that, which, which does protect the committee. To say that you are, you have those things in place. K C D, community use of digital resources, new policy. Um. And basically policy recognizes that digital resources, most notably public wifi, are now in common places in school and outlining appropriate considerations. K D C B is the district website and social media. Another new policy. This new policy recognizes that districts and school communities. Both have websites and social media bases and best practices, including public comments on such sites need to be helped to. And then, um. E F C is universal free school meals. That's an update to the policy since the law has changed for, um, free meals. And then E F. D is new, uh, school nutrition program change policy. Again, with the updated to the free meals, it's getting the, the language and that up to speed. So it's not really a change in how we're doing this. So.
And then removal, the removal policy, K C D.
None. So, I mean, right, 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 we'll look real quick. Let me have their moving on. Blow up memory and see it. Um, yeah, so K, uh, C P is community involvement in decision-making. It's a redundant, um, policy that is found in other places in our M A S C recommends that we move it.
Any questions on the new policies, Henry?
And of course, if you have one, it's the first reading. So if you have questions, please let me, you email me or bring it to the next meeting. Email me so I can get the answers ahead of the meeting. So. If it's a simple question, we can move forward with it.
Perfect. Um, it's time for you, Henry. You could share what you want to talk about.
Awesome. Uh, so I, I guess first and foremost, I, I had a. Uh, collaboration or collaborative meeting, um, last week. And just like I said in the other meeting. Uh, the organization continues to impress me. It is very much in the black, not as much as they were predicting, but they spent a lot of time developing. Uh, asynchronous professional development for teachers, which as a teacher I greatly appreciate. Um, and that is going to actually lower their costs for member districts moving forward once it's implemented. So that was really exciting. Um. I had a, a constituent reach out about composting and I wasn't sure, it was today, we had a communique about it and I wasn't sure if that's something that. I have to add to next week's agenda or if that's something I can read to you all or have them come and do public comments. I don't know what the, the procedure is there.
Well, play the hairpin. Well, procedure wise, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. So I will, I will ask to have it added to next week's agenda.
Yeah, you can add it to the next agenda. Um.
Next month. Okay.
Also, if a constituent reads it out to you regarding concern, you can also contact either me or the principal, um, if you're looking to back checking on that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Right?
Yep. Um, and then I have one other question regarding, um. A grant program in the states that Renew America's schools, but, uh, because the second round of funding for that is coming up in the spring, I think. I just wasn't sure if we're involved with that, given that our roof leaks and we could get some solar panels.
Um. I don't recognize the name of that off the top of my head. I don't know. Will you just shoot it to me?
I would love to.
There's a lot, there's a lot of companies trying to jump on. There's, they're putting like fifty million into roofs in solar.
Hmm.
And you're like, wow, we should jump on board with that. Well, if you break down how much fifty million is going to get you on a new roof in a public school building with solar, you're talking about like four projects. And so it's a huge amount of money. And so I, I got reached out by one of the companies. I was like, oh, this is great. You know, you know, because Frontier is going to be flat roof and we want to replace the roof. We can throw some solar on it. And I was like, wait a minute. The roof alone is going to cost, you know, you know, seven, seven million.
Yeah.
And then the solar on top of that, that will take one-fifth of the state's overall budget. So I don't know what they're really doing with that money, but. I'm, I'm, you can constantly get hit up by, hey, the school, the state's coming out with money. You know, sign on to our company and then there's not really money there. So send it to me. I don't mean to be a party group, but I have a feeling that's.
I have, all, all good. Um. And, uh, that's it. That's it for me.
Thanks, Henry.
Thank you.
Uh. Get me the numbers. I'm sorry.
Start. Okay. Uh, capital improvement committee met, uh, last week to give priorities to projects and the school's projects received top priority. So, um, the only caveat to that was, um, the second phase of the mini splits. Received a B in case they want to finance everything together in a single year. But as far as the way we had it laid out, it's priority A along with the floors. Um, so we're good to go.
Wow. Wow. That's. That's super.
Yeah.
Um.
And they'll get hopefully some rebate back.
Yes. Well, that was a big talking point, but you know, if we didn't move on this now, those rebates would go away.
Yeah. And they are fluctuating like compared to what we were expecting on some of the projects. We're still getting. Things in, money in, but, um. Not quite exactly what we thought on some of the other things that are happening, just so they have that in the back of their mind too. But get it locked in so they get something at least.
Right.
Be great.
If no one else has any, I'd need a motion to adjourn.
Um, wait, was there no committee chair report?
Excuse me?
Was there no, I don't know if I missed something.
No. Did I have a report? No. No. I talked enough.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it. All favor. Good night, Henry.
Good night. Thanks, guys.